All right, good evening, everyone. Tonight is Tuesday, January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. This meeting hearing of the AIR Select Board will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation via Zoom is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems help interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in a specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. This meeting will be live on Zoom and Channel Eight. The public may access the proceedings by joining Zoom, meeting ID number eight-nine-seven-nine-zero-eight-zero-zero-seven-nine-three, or by calling nine-two-nine-two-zero-five-six-zero-nine-nine. For additional information about remote participation, please contact Carly Antonellis, Assistant Town Manager, at ATM@AIR.MA.us, or nine-seven-eight-seven-seven-two-eight-two-two-zero, extension one-hundred, prior to the meeting. If I could ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, are there any amendments to the agenda?
I don't have any. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
All is in favor?
Aye.
And the cheers is aye. Couple of announcements. The winter parking ban is in effect through April fifteenth. This annual parking ban prohibits parking any motor vehicle on any street or sidewalk in the town of AIR between the hours of twelve AM and six AM. The winter parking ban also prohibits parking any motor vehicle on any street or sidewalk in the town of AIR during a snowstorm. And tomorrow night, on the eighteenth, at the high school, the Select Board, in coordination with the Cable Advisor Committee, will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, at six PM in the auditorium of the AIR Shirley Regional High School. The purpose of the public hearing will be determined whether to issue a cable television license to Comcast. Members of the public are invited to attend and be heard on the topic. A, whether the current cable operator is in full compliance with its currently existing cable license, and B, what are the town's future community cable-related needs? I'm just going to add the caveat, we will not be talking about Internet. All right. Anyone here for public input? All right. Dr. Petrosi, Director, Council and Agent, come on down.
Hello. I just wanted to come tonight to ask the Select Board to accept a donation from the Friends of the Nishoba Valley Medical Center in the amount of five hundred dollars to the senior center for whatever they didn't earmark it for anything specific. It's just whatever program or service we'd like to use it for.
Excellent. Great, no questions?
No questions for me? Yep, I'll make a motion. That the AIR Select Board approved the acceptance of the donation from the Friends of the Nishoba Valley Medical Center in the amount of five hundred dollars to the AIR Council and Agent and Senior Center. Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
The cheers is aye. Congratulations on the five hundred dollars.
Thank you so much.
All right. Jeff Thomas, Director, Department of Parks and Recreation, come on down.
Guys are moving things right along today. Brother got out of the gym and we're...
I can only lengthen it so much.
Selectman Hood knows about all that stuff. His kids all went through all those programs. So I've come back based on a couple of things that from our last meeting talking about the playground. And we gave you a budget estimate that was given to us from Beta, our consultant, who has given us some pricing for the replacement of playground equipment. What we did, and do we have a way to put that up on the... If we don't, I actually have some sheets.
No, I can...
It's fine if we don't.
Yeah, I can go just a little more.
Well, still pass these out anyway.
Because we have this in the...
Yeah, okay. Is it the correct one?
It is the correct one, thank you.
So the last estimate we provided was fairly quickly put together through Beta. We'd asked them to put together an estimate for the different replacements for the playground and what their vision of what they thought we want to have out there. So that included a lot of landscaping, different equipment, port-in-place surfacing, things like that. Of course, we did ask them to make sure that they gave a respectable estimate that we could count on as opposed to something that was, you know, cut it razor-thin so we can try to sell this thing. So their estimate was pretty high. So the sheet we've just given you has a couple of different columns. The first one is the first beta cost estimate, and that's that first figure that we gave you with that deplorable total cost after the contingency. The second column is an adjusted estimate that they came up with based on taking a second look at some of these different pieces. And you can see some of the items went down, some fairly considerably, some not at all. Things like the port-in-place surface, which is almost three hundred thousand dollars. That's the one that's not really moving. But other things were a little bit less at least. The big thing that we changed was taking out some pieces that we thought we could do in-house for much cheaper than their estimate was. And it would be, that's not saying their estimate was incorrect. If you give it to a contractor, we all know what happens with some of those things. Like, for example, the new park sign. Select person Livingston pointed up for nine thousand dollars. You know, what kind of sign are we giving for that? That's ridiculous. So obviously, we can get like fifteen hundred dollars is more than enough for something like that. But if you go down all those lines, these are all things that we can do in-house, either just procuring and then installing ourselves or doing different things. So that was able to get significant savings on that. And then the last two columns are something else that was requested to see if we can try to break into some pieces just in case there was a desire to, because it was so much money, maybe cut it down and see what we couldn't, couldn't do. So this is, the third column is the adjusted estimates without the adult features. And that adult is, we talked before about how the new playground is going to have an additional feature behind the playground between the old playground and the water. There's going to be a natural surface playground, some more natural type of items. Everything in the adult section would be for the cost involved with that. So when we put this out to bid, we're going to put it out with that section as an adult. So if you look at that in total, the final figures for that for the adjusted with the adults in the third column is a little more than a million dollars, and then with the contingency, one point three-six. We also talked before about what we had left in our budget from the remediation and then what was going to be Phase One of trying to get some playground equipment just to get started, and then hopefully trying to get funds through either grants or other sources. So we have approximately five hundred and fifty thousand dollars left in that. So in the end, what we're looking for is, and I think that that top line is actually, the one on the screen is actually incorrect slightly. I'm not sure what's off on that. But in any case, our figures that we have is closer to about eight hundred thousand dollars for the adjusted estimates before the adults and then the hundred and fifty-four thousand for the adults. We've recently revisited this with the Capital Planning Committee, and we discussed this with them on Thursday night. And part of that discussion was different options that we could look for for different funding. So they're supportive of the project, but wanted us to continue to talk with both the Select Board and the CPC. Their recommendation was that it would be an ideal thing to ask CPC for five hundred thousand dollars for the project and have the base of this funding source we're looking for come from that. Obviously, there's a lot of advantage to CPC funding that the board is all very much aware of. And so after that, we'd be looking for another four hundred and sixty thousand dollars approximately, assuming that CPC does approve that. So where could that come from? We don't want it to go past the threshold for going to a ballot initiative with capital planning. So I believe that's three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is the maximum for that.
Three hundred and fifty thousand.
Just three fifty? I swear, I keep on getting that figure backwards every time, every time I think it is. But I'm going to go with you.
Don't worry.
You're the person who would know. So obviously, that would leave us somewhat short. So at that point, we would seek from your board usage of either ARPA funds or UDAG funds for the remainder. Our preference would be to try to get more funding than that and less from capital planning because the turnaround time for purchasing some of this equipment is considerable. I believe, Rob, if you had it up on there, or I'm sorry, Carl, if you had it up on there, the one that had the actual drawing of the... You saw that?
Yeah.
Good guys, yes. So that's a long turnaround from the time that we finally get funding available to us to the time we can actually make the purchase and have the equipment delivered before we can even start the construction of it. So having other funds that might be more readily available might allow us to make the equipment purchase a little quicker and have it on hand for when we do do the port-in-place, which has to be the first step, and then moving on to the actual installation of the equipment. So with all that said, we'll be talking to the CPC next. With that, we have our application already in place for them. Our Commissioner, Chairman Jason Mayo, is going to be talking to that Chairman of the CPC Board to try to get that in place for us to be on their meeting for their next meeting, which I'm not sure, I believe it's early in February. So that would be our next step toward trying to solidify where the funding's coming from. But Mr. Pumperon thought it was ideal for us to still come before your board and give you an update of where we're at and give you some thoughts or ideas that you might have for how we want to move this project forward.
Well, I am glad to see the price has gone down a little bit. Especially the sign, which is a lot of things to bother me, but that sign was really the kicker. So let me ask you this, and I'll use the sign, for example. Have we thought about going to, like, Nishoba Tech, asking the Scouts as to them building the sign?
Not yet.
Because, I mean, you know, for example, our podium that we use, the high school and even the one up at the Great Hall, was built by, I think it was the students at Nishoba, right? So, I mean, I just think that something like that should definitely be looked into because that's a good project for the Scouts or a good project for the school. So we should definitely look into that because they'll even get, you know, we can make sure they get a little recognition, plaque and everything, you know?
Absolutely. We actually, the Parks Department, prides ourselves in trying to outsource and try to minimize and use volunteers. In fact, I can't not to tune our own horn, but I don't think there's a department in town that doesn't utilize volunteers more than we do.
Right.
We are always seeking that out and community service of any type of that. So that's a good resource for us to look at. And obviously, if anyone has any other thoughts on different avenues for us to take, we would certainly pursue them. But Eagle Scout projects, things like that, those would certainly be among many of these in yellow that you would see.
Yeah.
Things like the benches, we actually had, we currently have benches along the waterfront, which was an Eagle Scout project. And that's exactly, and Scotty, you were actually involved with that project, that's exactly the same type of setup we'd be doing for this. And if we had to do it in-house because we couldn't find a volunteer, that's what the price would be of. So that's why we put it in. Because as much as we would like to have these things happen, we have to have that in line in case we can't get it. What would it cost?
Yeah, I mean, even the benches. And what about, you know, like, when the bank sold the bricks? Couldn't we find something that, you know, we could sell, like, you know, to purchase a tree?
We certainly...
Which also could, you know, the thought behind that also, one, it could help raise funds, but it also helps, you know, give the town more feeling of ownership on Kitty Junction, that they were more of a part of it too, rather than just showing up at town meeting and saying, you know, yes or no.
Absolutely, and we would be pursuing those types of things as well.
Okay.
One of our committee members from when we first formed this, that was one of the first initiatives that she thought of as something we want to pursue. But, you know, again, we have to at least get some base foundation. And then, once we have that, we know what we have, we can pursue that. And with all projects that we've done through our department, we don't assume we're going to exhaust that number. We'd like to think that at some point, we're going to be done with it, and then based on whatever we're saving, we're going to give that money back to the town.
Any questions?
Yep. So just for the public, so I'm on the Capital Planning Committee, and the conversation that we had last Thursday, Jeff alluded to, really, there is full support from the committee to get this project through and get it fully completed as much as possible within this calendar year. The challenge that we're having on capital is we have two other large ticket items that are going to be ballot initiatives, debt exclusions. So we want to try to avoid a third one, kind of weighing those two versus a third one possibly being a playground, the fear is that the playground will lose out. I think the challenge here is looking at what's left for purchasing and looking at the different buckets for funding. I don't think you're going to be able to really move ahead until July first or after town meeting because, you know, CPC does give you the five hundred thousand, and then capital planning does say we are able to give you the three hundred and fifty thousand. That still doesn't become available. Of the five fifty-two that's left, you could get, looking at the punch list here, you could probably get down through pouring the surface and then be in a potential way you'd be waiting just for the equipment. I don't really see, just from my view, I don't see a way that we could flip that or we could get you funding ahead of time to order the equipment itself first.
Right, yeah. Our thinking was it would have to be to either the ARPA or UDAG funds. Would be the only way that we would be able to get to that. And that one that we're looking for would actually be the play equipment, which is six forty-five. So that's about a hundred thousand dollars more is what we'd be looking for to be able to make that first initial purchase. And that's assuming that we don't have any further costs with our remediation.
So if we were to go with, say, we were to go with UDAG, that would get them the money now, then we could ask for replenishment, right? That would give them the money earlier?
Yeah, I guess one approach could be, so we have five fifty-two available. We need six fifty just around it. So we would need a hundred thousand dollars from UDAG to put in order if you wanted to use whatever remaining funds are now to put towards the equipment and then let the other process flow through on CPC and capital.
And I might have misspoken that because, again, if we're shooting for the whole thing with the nature-based stuff, there is some equipment purchasing on that, I think it's sixty-five. So that's the additional part of that, if we wanted to go with that as well. Again, it's all about strategy, whether or not we want to try to put it into different pieces or not. And that could be delayed too, because that could be done as a secondary project.
The other items that you took out, the asphalt burn and asphalt path, what are those?
So that is all part of that natural base play area. If you're familiar with the Peroni Park perimeter path that goes behind the play area, that has to be built up to create an area that's, that you can use because it's supposed to include a slide area that's going to go down the hill. You have to have a base area there to start with. So just building up that berm alone, that's going to be some cost. And then restructuring that perimeter path is going to be part of it too.
So if the...
I thought that was excessive cost, by the way, but that's what they had estimated.
Yeah, so the plate, like, if we move the nature play equipment, all of it goes back in?
Madam Chair, question through UDAG. Jeff, do you know, so on the play equipment, that's six forty-five, seven fifty. Just for the sake of argument, assuming that town meeting authorized the CPC, say, the borrowing portion of it, you would have, at least you'd have the appropriation that had been authorized, let's say, on April twenty-fourth. Do you know, can you lock in on this price once that happens? In other words, like, the fire department and so forth on some of their vehicles, once they have the green light on the funding, they can at least lock in on the price?
Yeah, I'll have to check on that with our source at Beta, who is lining these things up, whether or not that's what the, how you can do that, if you can buy it on credit or what you could do, when you could place that order and get that actual quoted price. My guess is you could.
I'm also curious on the equipment, what is the life expectancy of it?
I don't recall seeing a life expectancy on it. I can only speculate. All the ones that I've seen that were put in twenty-seven years ago are still going very strong. This is, it's always about, you know, new generations of things and what's the actual life expectancy? They can say whatever it is, but then, you know, it's going to be more, I'd say, minimal of thirty years, but I would assume much more. The surface is probably the most concerning thing that I was questioning, and they thought that was about thirty. So it's hard to say.
Yes, oh, sorry.
Madam Chair, just two other points, just for the board's purposes. So in essence, on this sheet, you're looking at nine hundred and sixty-six thousand, six twenty-five, that is additional. If they apply for five hundred thousand through the CPC, which I know Mr. Thomas indicated they're going to submit that application, and I think the CPC meets on February first, that leaves four hundred and sixty-six thousand, six twenty-five. The capital, the current capital policy threshold, as Selectman Hood mentioned, is three fifty, which if that, assuming that went through, that leaves a hundred and sixteen thousand, six twenty-five as the balance that we'd have to come up with. The current balance in the UDAG fund is two million, fifteen thousand, two eighty-eight. And there are some things subject for replenishment there, but as of today, that's the balance. The ARPA is one point five million is the balance. And in CPC, for the open space category, which was the eligible category last year that funded the playground, there's about a million dollars in there, and there's subject for some more from the match to come in. The challenge, I agree with Selectman Hood, is as much as we'd like to get this ordered as soon as possible, the only way, you know, to do that would be to, you know, from the UDAG, and that's a large chunk at six hundred and forty-five thousand, seven fifty. So that's why I was asking if you could get a commitment of a locked-in, you know, price. I know you still got the ordering time.
Did you take into consideration the funding that we currently have in? The five hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we have available?
Right, so if I go by your sheet with that, the total funding needed is nine sixty-six, six twenty-five, right?
Right.
And then if, let's just say, there was five hundred thousand from CPC, that brings you down to four sixty-six, six twenty-five. And then let's just say, for the sake of argument, the capital recommended to the board, the maximum without going to a debt exclusion would be three fifty. So that puts you at a hundred and sixteen thousand, six twenty-five, you know, as a balance that...
For the entire project.
For the entire project. What I'm saying is something of that level from UDAG, I mean, would be the purview of the board because you can replenish it. The thing with the ARPA funds is they're one time.
Right, so I think, like, if you're looking to order now, and there's a risk involved, is utilizing some of the available funds, so say, five hundred thousand of that, and then infusing a hundred and fifty thousand from UDAG. And that gives the funds available immediately for putting the order in for the equipment. But there's that risk involved because we're kind of putting the cart before the horse, so to speak, where, you know, it's depending on CPC funding, you know?
Absolutely, absolutely. If you don't get that funding, then you've got a pile of equipment that's not going anywhere.
Exactly, so there's definitely a risk involved. I mean, I would feel more comfortable, let's see how CPC plays out. I think if CPC commits to putting it on the warrant, and we see what a dollar amount is, we can probably come up with a better understanding of what the UDAG number would be and then maybe look at making, taking action a little bit earlier.
Certainly. To Selectman Hood's point, that's why our strategy would actually not be to order it like tomorrow. It would be more to order it after town meeting. But that would still be, you know, moving things along. It's still the sixty weeks.
Since the last week of April.
Right.
Does that cut into, you know, a problem of getting the equipment because everybody else in the country is ordering at the same time?
I'm not sure when the country's ordering. But I, not to be fluff with you, I'm just saying, I don't know what that difference would be. I will talk with Beta even tomorrow about that specific point.
Yeah.
Just to verify that.
It's just that there's, you know, like, certain times of years, things get, like, bought, you know? That's why I said it that way, yeah.
Sure. Our representative from Beta, who you met the previous meeting, he actually thought that this upcoming season was the best time to purchase.
Okay.
So that's what he said.
I just have a question. So the, we have to go up to bid to buy the equipment, correct? Or you have, like, a sole source?
We're hoping to go through the mass, helping out.
The procurement?
Yes, yes.
I'm just, because we can't go up to bid without an appropriation. It's so, I think the timing might be a little wonky. But if we use that cash ahead of time?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So is there any cash source that we have not discussed?
I think so.
I think so.
I am making a sourdough starter, so I could have some sourdough bread like that.
Madam Chair. Just one other, one other point, Jeff, I think, and we've talked about this as we move forward with this. I think one of the important things for town meeting and for the public is the explanation as to why, you know, we need this additional funding. In other words, what I'm getting at, we did, and I might get the numbers wrong, but at the town meeting, it was three fifty on the capital and four hundred on the CPC. And then later, the state delegation check is still, they had another hundred thousand. I think many feel that that was the funding for the whole project, and now we need just under another million. And I think, and of that, the two major components, just even in your budget, the play equipment is six hundred and forty-five thousand, and the pour-in play, which you want, is two ninety-two. So nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand of that is just those two, I'll call them proprietary items. But I think there will be a lot of questions as to what drove this increase and not in the interest of time. Is it the price for that equipment and pour-in play, did that go up significantly since the spring?
Yes.
I think you have to be prepared to just explain those significant drivers.
Yes, and we have explained, and we will continue to explain those things. There's been two major factors. One has been, as I said at the last meeting we had, that it was almost a double in price for what's happened. So that's the biggest part of it. And the second is that when we made the initial request, we had, I thought we had made it clear this was for Phase One, which was not going to be for the entire playground build. Our next goal was to try to then seek fundings either from grants or loans or other sources to get the next set of funding for that. Since then, because the prices have gone up so much and there's anticipation for more price increase down the road, it's ideal to have this continue and try to get it done in one clean swoop before prices go up again.
All right, Pauline has a question. Pauline?
Good evening, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to follow up on what you suggested specifically. Why not at least attempt a campaign to sell a tree to create a new netting grove? There is a lot of disappointment that so many of the trees that were the original netting grove had to be removed. We have no idea how that will work until we try it. But if it helps defer or deprive the cost, where's the harm? The other thought, I like the bricks, I don't know where we can put them in Peroni Park. The walkway is a great place, but that then adds to additional cost to remove the paved surface and replace it with bricks, but maybe around the flagpole?
I was just going to say, or to kind of like outline the park itself.
Exactly.
Bricks would go well.
I mean, at five dollars a brick, I'm sure you'll sell plenty. I don't know what a tree would cost, but even if it's a... I mean, at five dollars a brick, I'm sure you'll sell plenty. I don't know what a tree would cost, but even if it's a hundred dollars, we're offsetting a lot of the unanticipated expense and giving people the opportunity to dedicate a tree to a family member. This is a community of veterans. It's a community of veterans' families.
Mm-hmm.
I bought a brick for the memorial walkover at Devens. I'll buy a tree in my father's name for Peroni Park. So these are things I think the community, as you said, Janice, will give it ownership, and you don't know how much you'll raise until you try it. Thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Uh, if I could just address a couple of things. Uh, Pauline, uh, five dollars, was that what the price was for the bricks over at Devens, do you recall?
Um, no, Devens was a hundred and twenty five, Main Street or North Mill's, Savings Bank was five dollars.
Yeah, but that was a long time.
Right, right.
Very long time.
Very long time ago, but
My my guess is we could probably do more than five.
I like I like the part where you you added on the um, you know, dedicating it to a family member. When you mentioned your father, I was thinking, who would do that one for mine? So, um, yes, you want to say something?
That that works up at the field were two hundred dollars.
Two hundred.
And those actually sold out, I think, in two weeks.
Yeah, so, so
Yeah, even a bench, you know, uh, you know, uh, donate a, don't, you know, purchase a bench and have it dedicated to somebody. So, yeah.
Absolutely, absolutely. No, we're we're
Those are great ideas and and, you know,
Yeah.
We laugh about the bake sale, but we could have the bake sale while selling the bricks and the benches too, so.
Yes.
At this point, every quarter counts.
Certainly. And as far as the trees go, uh, one thing that's one area we may be able to get for free. Uh, we've been able to replenish a number of trees uh throughout the park and uh beach and other parts of town uh through our tree warden, who's been able to get uh trees, uh, he's got a, I don't recall the program, but but he gets a certain number of trees each year that uh for free for us to to use that are donated or or part of the brand program. Uh, so that's actually where we're hoping to get some of our trees right off the bat.
Excellent.
But if somebody wants to donate a tree, maybe that's something we can set up, because because it's it's like you said, um, Janice, um, it's not just the money, it's also the investment and the emotional investment that people make into something like this. And we certainly want to it utilize that as much as possible.
Yeah. Yeah, we have to look, it, you know, honestly, we just have to look under, we have to look under the rug. Okay, uh, not this one. Don't take anything out of this one. Um, but no, seriously, we we have to look everywhere for every little penny um for this project to be able to work. Will it end up working? Yes. Is it going to be painful to get there? Yes. In the end, are we all going to be satisfied? I think we will be. I think we will be, and if we've all got, you know, a a brick or a tree or a bench, I think that just adds to the flavor, so.
Excellent.
Okay. All right, anything else?
Anything for me? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll report back once we meet the CPC.
We're gonna cost you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay. All right, next up, Susan Cope, Town Clerk. Come on down.
Hi.
Good evening, Madam Clerk.
Good evening. Well, it's that time of year. For what? For all things municipal government.
Exciting.
Um, of which I would like to start off with, um, the opening of the town election um warrant and the uh nominations um for offices this year that will appear on the ballot. Um, so I had sent that um over, but we will have um a one-year, a one-three-year term for assessor, one-three-year term for Board of Health, one-three-year term for Commission of Trust Funds, one-three-year term for Constable, one-three-year term for Library Trustee, two-three-year terms for Park Commissioners, two-three-year terms for Planning Board, uh, one-three-year term for Regional School District Committee, um, one-three-year term for Select Board, and one-five-year term for the Housing Authority. So, um, upon your um vote, we we are ready tomorrow morning at eight AM to start the nomination papers for anyone um wanting to pull papers and um become involved in our um town. The last day to request the nomination papers is Friday, March seventeenth at twelve PM, and the last day to submit nomination papers is Tuesday, March twenty first at five PM. So, that's on that.
Any questions?
No questions. Make a motion to open the nomination process for the annual town election offices to appear on the ballot as read by the chair, by the clerk.
Second.
All those favor, sorry. You look like you were about to, you look like you were ready to say something. All right, all right, and the chair says aye. Okay.
Thank you. Um, and just a reminder as well that the last day to register a vote, um, if you're not already registered for both the annual town meeting and annual town election is uh Friday. That can't be right. Friday, April fourteenth, is that right? No, it's Tuesday, April fourth. Sorry, I have my own typo here. Tuesday, April fourth. That was at five PM. Um, so, I apologize for that. The last day to request an absentee or vote by mail ballot, by mail for the annual town election is Tuesday, May second, twenty twenty three at five PM. And the last day to request an absentee ballot in person for the annual town election is Monday, May eighth at twelve PM. Um, with the Votes Act, um, there's been um changes that will continue um moving forward, of which is with um mail-in or um they call it no excuse um voting. So mail-in ballots are available for local elections. Um, we don't do a mailing out that's at the state level. The state mails out the cards for folks to want to participate or not. Uh, the town does not mail out cards, but it the form is available in my office on the website for um any voters to request a vote by mail as well as an absentee ballot application. So those, um, we can start receiving those uh tomorrow for anybody that is interested. Um, and once the ballots um are in the office, we will be mailing those out. But mail-in voting um is something that's offered. In-person early voting is not um for local elections. So we will have the mail-in ballots, but not the in-person early voting for the local election. Um, that is still for state and general elections, so. All that information is um on the website, on my webpage. And the only other change, um, I do want to say about the nomination papers is due to uh the twenty twenty two gubernatorial election, um, due to our turnout, um, there is thirty-two signatures required. Previously, it was twenty-six. Um, so there are thirty-two signatures required, which is still actually just one page. It's one nomination paper, but it's the full front and back, so. Um, but again, all that information I will have um on the Town Clerk's page and the website, and again, come to the office and talk to myself or Christina. That's all the information I have on elections. And thank you. And we'll be there at eight AM for everybody to come in and get their nomination papers, so. Bright and early.
Knocking on the door.
Bright and early.
All right, Robert?
Madam Chair, members of the board, in in keeping with the theme, um, the next item, respectfully recommending with the Select Board vote, uh, to open the annual town meeting warrant for April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. And uh per the memo in your packet, uh, the deadline for all warrant articles will be twelve noon on Friday, March thirty-first. That's also the same deadline for citizens petitions to the town clerk. Uh, the Select Board uh will meet to finalize and approve the annual town meeting warrant on Tuesday, April fourth at six PM as part of your meeting. Uh, then the warrant will be officially posted by Friday, April seventh, and sent for printing and mailing to all heir households in advance of town meeting, and then the town meeting will take place on Monday, April twenty-fourth at seven PM. And this memo follows the schedule that the board approved for the town uh budget and town meeting, so respectfully recommending that the board vote to open the annual town meeting warrant.
I'll make a motion to open the town meeting warrant for the April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three uh annual town meeting. Second.
All those a favor?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Town meeting warrant is open.
With that, um, Madam Chair, I'll go uh right to my uh report. Uh, you have in your packet all of the warrants that were reviewed and approved since the board last met on December twentieth. I will talk about the FY twenty-four budget in just a minute. That's my um second item. I just want to reemphasize, as the chair mentioned, uh, the importance of that public hearing tomorrow night at six PM in the high school auditorium for the cable license. Um, thank you for announcing that. Just want to stress that, again, it's an important opportunity uh for public input. Uh, wanna put on your calendar, per the calendar approved in the fall, that next Wednesday, January twenty-fifth at six PM will be the first public budget forum. Uh, will present draft one of the budget, uh, which you have in more detail. Uh, that's a joint meeting of the Select Board and the FinCom. Make a brief uh presentation uh on the budget at this point in the process. Obviously, the Select Board and FinCom, any questions or input at that time. And then uh through the chair, as we've always done, open it uh to the public for any input or comments. Um, the meeting of the the presentation next Wednesday, the twenty-fifth at six PM will also be a hybrid meeting, so individuals can either attend in person or participate um remotely, and I just have a few points on the budget in just a moment. Um, also wanted just on the radar screen, more for the public, on Tuesday, February seventh, as part of the Select Board meeting at six o'clock, uh, the Air Shirley Regional School District will be presenting the FY twenty-four uh budget, and that will be a joint meeting of the Select Board uh and the FinCom um on February uh seventh. So as the town clerk mentioned, we're into all things municipal and budget at this point. I just wanted to, um, on my second item, unless there's any, my main point tonight was on the budget, but if there's any administrative questions from the board. Uh, the item two, I I don't want to take away all of the excitement for next Wednesday, so I'll be brief, but I do welcome um from the Select Board, uh, any input on that first um presentation. Again, historically, we usually do a general overview on the larger position of the town entering the budget, focusing on the major drivers of the FY twenty-four budget. Um, and we'll, she could talk about, um, you know, the revenue projections and so forth, like we do every year, but I'm open to any suggestions um on topics uh to cover or not. Of course, as at the beginning of the process, we'll do some more leading up to March, um, discussions on the budget, so um, just something to think about. Just a couple of initial points on draft one of the budget, uh, which was transmitted to the Select Board in the FinCom last Friday in accordance with the schedule. I just want to uh stress again, um, as we have a lot of uh new folks also involved in the process, that draft one is just that. It is a draft. It is the starting point o- of the budget. It is subject to, obviously, adjustments um and changes both up and down. Um, it obviously, historically, if you look back, comes in on the high side. Um, on a very high side this year, we we're aware of that as we work through the process. Just some of the k- key themes, and I'll talk about this in more detail on the twenty-fifth. We come into the FY twenty-four budget in a strong financial um position. The reserves of the town, um, the overall reserves, capacity and so forth, we are in a strong position as we have been over the last several cycles. With that being said, however, as you will see in the budget, and this is, I think, affecting not only every city in town, but perhaps every every household, um, energy and fuel costs are unfortunately significant in in this budget, specifically in the DPW and Facilities Department. Um, increases on energy and fuel costs. The issue of inflation, and I don't mean to sound like one of those national news shows, but inflation has also hit across the board everywhere. It's just a reality. The supply chain issues and Selectman Hood, actually, all of you have had experience with this, but as we're seeing from capital and so forth, the the new challenge in the post-pandemic world is the supply chain issues. The sooner you can lock in on a price, the sooner you can order it, the better. Prices, as we've seen just in capital, have changed between meetings, which is only a couple of weeks, um, as we move forward. In the budget, as far as personnel, and again, I'll get into this in more detail, as far as new personnel, there is one new administrative police sergeant proposed in the police budget. Uh, Chief Gill, um, will speak briefly upon that at the forum, and we'd like to come to the board February meeting and talk a little bit more in detail about the justification for that request. The other personnel piece, as we're continuing with the building and code enforcement, uh, if you'll recall, town meeting through uh your recommendation in the budget increased, well, we created a code enforcement assisting building inspector for twenty hours a week. Uh, the building commissioner is recommending uh that we increase that to full-time. He would also like to come uh to the Select Board at your second meeting in February uh to give the board an update, not only on this request, but on the ongoing enforcement measures uh that are underway, and it sort of ties in. Uh, he'd like to come back under the new business item and talk about that uh as well. Some initial areas for further budget adjustment downward. Um, I want to point out the reserve fund in the budget. Historically, pre-pandemic, the reserve fund was usually at a hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, when the pandemic hit, uh, the FinCom and myself and Ms. Cabree and this board, we increased it to three hundred thousand because we didn't know what was going to happen. It has stayed at three hundred thousand for the last two cycles. Looking at the history, um, it definitely can come down, which is a positive thing. In this budget, there's a placeholder of two hundred thousand. I'm well aware that this needs to be reviewed in a recommendation from the Finance Committee, so I'm not trying to preempt that. But from my vantage point, I think even at two hundred thousand, that could come down further based on the history somewhat, getting us back to pre-pandemic levels. The town council budget, um, did reduce some from level funded. I think there is some opportunity there. Something, the tree management plan, there was a ten-year plan that's in the budget that the new DPW director, this was his predecessor's project. This year alone, there's thirty-four thousand dollars um in that tree management plan. And speaking with him, I think there's an opportunity that we can do something there, but maybe not, you know, the the full amount. Another thing, just on the radar screen, the issue of stormwater, the total stormwater budget for FY twenty-four is three hundred and three thousand, which represents a thirty percent increase. Um, several years ago, uh, we created the Stormwater Enterprise, if not the funding mechanism for it, and the the thought is that we would fund stormwater through the general fund, um, which can still be an option, um, but this continues to um increase. There may be an area in there um for some opportunity with the director. Lastly, as the board is aware, every year, we have to put an estimate placeholder for health insurance. We have a placeholder of fifteen percent. We are cautiously optimistic when we get the rates in in February, that it will be lower, closer to ten would be ideal. And also the other insurance uh line items that the Assistant Town Manager manages in there, there are several, as there are every year, placeholders as the insurance uh rate process usually comes to fruition more towards the end of this uh process, so there are some other um placeholders there. An areas of potential increase, so there's areas of potential reduction. The draft one, as it does, has not in previous years, does not include any non-union COLA recommendation, which usually comes to the Select Board in February. There are three non-union personal service contracts that are in negotiation, and as far as unions, the town hall clerical union contract is up in negotiations, are underway. and negotiations are underway. So that's just a very brief snapshot under my report. Wednesday night, we will get into more of the detail and answer any questions, input that folks have. And then as, to steal Ms. Gabrie's word, we continue to sort of scrub the budget as we move through the process. And I look forward to working with the Select Board, the FINCOM, all the Boards and Committees on, on the process. That is my report for tonight, Madam Chair. Unless there's any questions from the Board, I don't have any action items this evening.
Any questions?
No, no questions. Thank you.
All right. Scott?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So at the last meeting, I had requested through the Town Manager to take a look at trash receptacles in public ways and the options that we would have to enforcing that. So the Town Manager gave me a very brief update this evening. That, I think, you said the building inspector wants to come to a February meeting to discuss that in a little more detail.
He, if I may, when I, since the last meeting, when you brought this up under, under new business, I did speak to him as well as the health agent on the issue and some of the areas you had brought up for them to look at. He would like to come to the Select, your next meeting, Select Board meeting for February for two things. One is to give an update on the ongoing enforcement efforts, which includes this, as I mentioned. But secondly, to discuss with the Board, from his expertise and looking into it, some recommendations on next steps in terms of enforcement and so forth. It is a frustrating reality, not only in here anywhere, you know, whether it's the dumpsters or these containers. And this is not meant as an excuse, so don't take it that way. It becomes an issue of enforcement, the timing for enforcement, and compliance also with our private sector neighbors, whether residents or businesses to some extent, you know. And when an issue happens, they have to cite it. And he's prepared, not only to just give an update, but to have a meaningful discussion with you and the public and to have some proposal for your consideration as far as next steps. So it is actively being worked on. We want to get all of the information, and he would like to, to meet with you to discuss that in detail. He's just, and he's getting that all together.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Let's go to the discussion.
So I'm going to add something that I didn't add on the thing because I didn't have an answer, but I did about an hour before I came in here. On Monday, February sixth, yeah, I believe that's the Monday, yes. I, the Harvard Chair, the Shirley Chair, Victor Norman, and I think someone from the Devens residents, I'm not sure else. But we've been invited by Mass Development to have a sit-down with them. I have no idea what the topic is about, I have no idea what's going to be going on. I just want to let people know that there is going to be a meeting with the Devens Jurisdiction Framework Committee and Mass Development. So just the chairs, they just, he just, it was just the chairs that were invited. And, so, stay tuned, see what happens.
All right, thank you.
I'm, I'm a little curious, I, I, I'm just, I'm a little curious, I'm a little curious. So we'll, we'll see, we'll see. Oh, yes, Pauline?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Could we backtrack just a second? I didn't catch everything that was said, not necessarily by Scott, but by Robert, regarding the director. Is, when you say that DPW will be banned, that will be discussing the rolling trash containers?
Actually, Pauline, the, the building commissioner, Charlie Schultz, is going to come.
And what date is that, Robert? I'm sorry.
That he'd like to come to the next meeting, which is February seventh. So the first item will be obviously the school budget, and then he'll probably, through the chair, probably be up, so February seventh.
And so, that's a Selectman's meeting?
Yes, yep.
Perfect. All right, thank you so much, I appreciate that. As you know, Robert, this is something I've been following for like two years. And I, I do want to say thank you for what you have done to at least make Central Avenue a little more passable.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it, have a good night.
You do, thank you. All right, so on to approval of meeting minutes. We have meeting minutes from December sixth and meeting minutes from December twentieth of twenty-twenty-two. Did anyone have any comments, questions concerned?
I do not have anything.
I did not.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of December sixth, twenty-twenty-two, and December twentieth, twenty-two, as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. And that being nothing else, before I take a motion, I just want to remind everybody, at the high school tomorrow is the Cable Advisory Committee. We would like to have a discussion with you, we will not be talking about internet. Okay, just, there have been a lot of people asking about that, so we're not talking about Intimet. This is basically your relationship with Comcast and APAC. So hopefully to see you six PM tomorrow at the Air Shirley Regional Middle School Auditorium. And with that.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye, good night, everybody.